I get out of your attention please. I'd like to call the regular meeting Wednesday, March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, seven thirty P. M., two o' clock, please.
Jonathan McKay.
Here.
Michael Snar.
Here.
Bill Lierman.
Here.
Bob Osborne.
Here.
Michael Albright.
Here.
Nick Eadlin.
Here.
Matt Perkey.
We are missing a councilperson tonight. What is your pleasure? Will they be excused?
Second.
Motion second to excuse the absent council member. All in favor, say goodbye, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Council member is excused. Would you now please stand and join me in the pleasure, please?
My pleasure.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just join me in a brief moment. Thank you. Under President's agenda tonight, you have the approval of the agenda. What is your pleasure? Will it be accepted as presented?
Second.
Motion second to accept the agenda as presented. All in favor, say goodbye, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is accepted as presented.
It was my second.
Happy Bill Lierman. Secondly, you have the minutes of the March sixth regular council meeting. What is your pleasure? Will it be accepted as presented? Second. Motion by Osborne, second by Albright. All in favor, say goodbye, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The meeting minutes are accepted as presented. That is all I have. I'm going to introduce the mayor here in just a moment, but want everyone to know he's going to have three different presentations that he's going to introduce, and these will just be presentations to council. There will be no question and answer from the audience at this time. If you do wish to comment, you can do that, of course, later in the meeting if you open session. So please, you know, just come forward and sign up if you wish to speak during the or the meeting. That's all I have. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you've noticed down by Clinton County Courthouse, middle block, we're putting a handicap accessible ramp, and that's come right along actually for permious levels in the Trinity outside. March seventeenth, from eleven to one, the community room, Clinton County Homelessness Shelter will be holding their annual soup fundraiser. Donations are welcome, and don't forget, you can get it in a large container to take home, but after supper, you don't have to even call right there at lunch. The twenty-fifth, March eleventh, at nine A. M. is our first cleanup. We'll be getting the day. Volunteers are together at City Hall direction, clean up here. But I do want to comment on the light at Grant and May down by Buckles. Somebody ran into the pole, pole old, sheer off the bottom. It has been replaced, but it stressed the pole across the street in front of Family Dollar. Capital Electric is getting the light for us right now, and sometime next week, we expect that pole to be installed and the light will be put back up. So just bear with us on that stop sign for a while. See, then we've got cleanup, tired. In fact, I'll tell you what, Anna, instead of you and I repeating each other, I think I'm just going to turn over to you right now. Watch.
I can, but it's not.
Yeah, go ahead.
Once again, council can respond with questions for Anna, but they're just hoping no questions.
There you go. I think I should all have a copy of it, and if anyone from the audience would like a copy when we're finished, I brought extras, and I can also provide you with them after the meeting or.
It will be soon.
It's not on.
There's a little delay of it turning on.
Okay.
Is it long?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm Anna, and I'm a code enforcement official for the city of Wilmington, and I've been in this capacity since November of two thousand twenty. So basically, I'm going to give an overview of what code enforcement does, and I'm going to finish up with a few loose ends and things that we've been, have been problematic and that we're working on. So like I said, after the presentation, if anyone would like a copy of it digitally or. It's.
Is it unhappy?
Yes. So am I.
The lights are bored, yeah.
I call it. Okay, we're going to escape. Just goes and.
I'm just ready for this. If you want to go to the second one and then click.
I can't. If you just touch it, it will. There you go.
That's right.
Either way, it's a flip down again.
It's better with the picture, I promise.
Well, so what you can do.
Yeah. Just go from slide to slide without.
Yeah, so you can just click on the next one.
Okay.
And then you do it that way.
That works. So my main message tonight, we're better together. So this is citizens, the administration, police dispatch, and myself working together to communicate issues so we can self-resolve them. Communication is just such a big part of what we do here because we all work in separate departments, but at the end of the day, we all have the same places that we need to go and things we need to do. This is just a little bit about code enforcement. This is actually posted on my front door out here. So it goes over what I do. Property maintenance, mostly, litter, properties, junk vehicles on private property, and what I usually tell people if they get upset, just because it's unsightly doesn't necessarily mean it's a violation, but we try to address everything as those issues come, and they are complex, and we have to deal with those one at a time. So that's sort of the overview. This is how code enforcement works. Like I said, there's a lot of text up here. This will all be available to anyone who would like to read it. Complaints are received, cases are open, investigations, notices are sent to property owners, and then we continue on. If someone's compliant, cases are closed, we move on with our lives. If they're not, sometimes we have to intervene either with court action or abatement, which the city will take on some of those things. So reporting trash and litter. So if you see something, say something. If it's in the state streets, let us know. It's on private property, we ask that you please don't trespass on private property, but please let somebody know, whether it be my department, maintenance and repair, and then we will contact a property owner and we'll go about cleaning that area or assisting with the cleaning if it's feasible at that time. But notification to that property owner is so important, and that's the process that we have to do. Trails, creeks, or parks, call the Parks Department, they handle all of those. And if there's questions about whether it's private or public property, you can always contact any of these offices, and we can let you know, and the message will end up getting where it needs to go. This is just my soapboxes, litter prevention. As it always has been, please bag your trash. Please trim your bushes so trash isn't collect there. Remove your trash containers from the curb, please, because when they fall over, trash goes everywhere. And then checking your own property. At the end of the day, it's your property. We want it to be clean. If you see litter in your yard before it blows in your neighbor's yard, just go pick it up. So just overview of my department. In two thousand twenty-two, we had one hundred and sixty-eight complaints. So that's about five minutes per week. And at the end of the year, I closed two hundred and sixty-four cases. So the program works. If we understand what's coming into us, we can address it, we can work with property owners, we can work in a public right of way. We cut back brush, we work on areas to heighten visibility in areas where trash and perhaps sometimes people might collect, but I think at the end of the day, we can agree that communicating effectively with the citizens, with our departments, my department is going to be the key for us. So that's sort of my little overview, and I'm going to move on. This is a slide that I'm not going to go into a lot of detail with, but you can all have this information at the end. So we got reports from last meeting about different spots, and we did investigations, we went out and poured spots. So each individual place is broken down into where we got the complaint, what the complaint entailed, and then what has been done afterwards. So this is available to everyone at the end of the meeting. Like I said, I'm not going to read this whole thing because your time is valuable, and for council to have me here to explain this stuff, everyone's time. I double touched it. There we go. So like I said, there's twelve sites. We looked at all of those, and I don't like the word vagrant, and so I'm not going to use it. It's just something I had on the slide. So basically, there were ten sites that were all private property. Two of them were parks property, and at this time, every single one of them has been checked into, investigated, and like I said, the outcomes of each of these things will be in these packets that are available for everyone at the end of the meeting. So. So the end of slide here is like closing the gaps, and I just want to basically say, like, I lived here for seventeen years. Wilmington's my home, and I worked in the public library, I worked for medical services, and in April, I'll be celebrating seven years here with the city of Wilmington. And I wouldn't want to be anywhere else. So I believe we all have like a duty to keep our communities clean. I think at the end of the day, we all want to do that, and I think the message is getting me through that we don't care. But I would tell you, I care very much and very deeply, and I'll continue to do the work, and I hope that you all do the work with me. So that's. Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Anna. And I will say, sometimes the city is at fault, too. When Anna and I went out and looked at all those places the other day, a lot of those drives, effectively city property that had trash.
They're out there today.
Yeah, they were working. Jared told me they were working on it today. So I'd like to tell you, we're on top of everything, but if you, like Anna said, if you see something, please say something. And Denise, since I can't read, we're darned. I guess you were supposed to be first, so if you'd like to come forward.
Yes, our.
I'll go. You can come with me, Denise.
Thank you.
This is something we have for each of the council members, but this is also accessible for anybody on their. Chief, aren't you still? My name is Beth George. I'm the chair of the Clinton County Homelessness Coalition. Is this on? There we go. I'm a soft talker, so I have to learn how to put the mic, mic to go. And let me thank you for the opportunity to come and talk tonight. You had asked us a couple days ago, so I don't have any fancy slides. I didn't have the chance to make those, but I want to give you a quick update on what's going on with our homelessness coalition. We, as you may or may not know, we were founded in January two thousand twenty-one, and Michael Snar's on there on stage today. He's been on there for, since I, since I participated. So what we did is when we were founded there, we were brought together as a county collaborative stakeholders who worked together to reduce and prevent homelessness. Part of this was, we developed a plan called Homeward, and we had two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two strategic action plan. And that plan called Homeward also is on our Facebook page, if anyone wants to take a look at it themselves, just so that they know that there's access for other people to look. And then in addition, we're now, we're in the process of developing our two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four strategic plan. But Michael had asked me to present some of the things that have been successes of the past year and some of our different goals. I do know one of the goals in Homeward is to bring an end to homelessness in the area, but also one of the ideas there is, if it does happen, we want it to be short and as short as possible, because we realize that things do happen, and people do have struggles. Is that, that's right there to me. Okay. And now I just want to share some of the successes that we've had this past year. There's four different categories, yeah, four different categories that we're going to talk about on successes. The first one is preventing homelessness. The note that, notes that I have here, which are in front of all the council members, is that we've explored education for transitional aged youth and shared housing resources. Clinton County Local Schools and Talbot House provided a resource navigator to serve families and high school students who are homeless or who are at risk of becoming homelessness. We examined rental housing market and opportunities to grow and support landlord partnerships. And then we also had Clinton County Services for Homelessness assisted six old households to remain housed with ten thousand one hundred and forty dollars in state homeless crisis response fund. For temporary housing, we had Clinton County Services for Homelessness, Sugar Tree Ministries, and Hope House. They initiated a new information collection, tracking, and coordinated approaches to ensure people in Clinton County can readily access shelter and rehousing assistance. There's no wrong door, so they can get them to the right place. Also, the Clinton County Homeless Shelter obtained thirty-three thousand dollars with different grants for new funding for a full-time access point coordinator, and Sidney in the back is there. And what the access point coordinator does is, if someone has issues with homelessness, that's the person who's going to get the call and try to help them get to the right place. Does that give you a good summary, Sidney?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then from January to September two thousand twenty-two, we provided emergency shelter for one hundred and fourteen people, eighty-three households, and thirteen families with children. And Hope, that's the homeless shelter. Hope House provided emergency shelter to sixty women, and Sugar Tree provided emergency shelter to fifty men, and provided ten men with ongoing affordable housing. And then now to providing rehousing assistance to end homelessness. The homeless shelter also obtained another thirty-three thousand two hundred and eighty dollars for funding to hire an additional full-time rehousing specialist, which I think we're looking for again as the person that moved on. And then also, they assisted twenty-six unhoused Clinton County families and individuals securing housing through their rapid access. And with providing other resources and other services and resources, community action agency, those are the resources there to share information about key services and resources, and also exploring opportunities to increase crisis intervention and coordinate a triage to critical housing, behavioral health, and other services in concert with law. Point in time count, we conduct that every year. It's just basically a nationwide idea of, of that one night census of homelessness. I don't know what the census. We have fifty-one people, and that was in January, which that was for the point of time. And then now to some homework here of current priorities. We're trying to obtain funding to prevent homelessness and provide rehousing when prevention fails. Increase transitional housing options for people needing longer-term temporary housing with supports. Increase coordinated crisis intervention and supports to reduce unsheltered homelessness and address critical needs and evidence-based intervention, and advocate for increased affordable housing, less rigid rental housing screening criteria, and for more partnerships to support families and individuals to remain safely housed. And that's, that's a basic summary of what we're up to. Also, I would say, you know, we're always looking for people to help. And we're, we're an open committee. Our next, our next quarterly meeting is on April twenty-seventh, downstairs in the lawyer room, and it's about ten A. M. in the morning till eleven-thirty. There is talk about, you know, maybe one of, one of the future meetings being rotating to have them at night, too, so we can engage more people. So there's a lot of different things going on. And I also would say this, too. We're, we're still looking for some help, because we have two steering committee positions open. I know we get one from the mayor's office, and then we also have one from the police department, where if you guys had anybody that you could send us, the steering committee meets the week before another one. And I think you sent somebody quite often. I don't always say, so I wanted to please plead for help there, too, if I got a chance. Then that's all I personally have here. And I don't know if there's any questions.
Any council votes have questions?
Just a comment, Mr. President.
Yep, you're good.
I got an email today that talked about some of the things that Jesus discussed, but it also said, go to the Facebook site. I encourage everybody to do that. I read through all that detail, and it's quite remarkable really what's going on out there. I sincerely appreciate it, and I think you're doing a super job. Homelessness. And it's, it's taken on so many different facets. I don't think I've ever had any, any, about homeless people and vagrants. And there's a tremendous difference between the two, in my estimation. The homeless camps that have been, were brought to us the last meeting, were addressed by Anna and the mayor. We need to figure out a way to get rid of those. Now, I, I thought everything you do for people who are down on their luck, they're homeless, kind of, kind of attached to life for the last twenty-five or thirty years since the first article.
Thirty-three hundred and seventy.
Thirty-five hundred and seventy.
Hope people remember dates very well.
I almost forgot.
But, you know, I, I've wrestled with this problem quite a bit since that last meeting. And I, I think we're going to have to break some of these things in the community down in different ways. What I hear from a lot of people is that the homeless shelter, Clinton County Homeless Shelter is doing a tremendous job, and because it makes people responsible and bring people back into society, gives them a chance to restart, get new things going in their lives, maybe make amends for some things that they've done before. But on the opposite side of that is the vagrancy issue that Anna touched on, and that would, that would perplex us. And so I've thought a lot about it, and, and maybe there's a way that we can start. We've had some of these, the homeless camps that were addressed here have been addressed before. Seems to be like about a year ago, we cleaned them up once before, and people keep coming back. One of the things I'd like for our committee to do, and you folks just to think about a little bit, there's got to be a way that we as council can appropriate money to deal with these vagrants. But my initial thought is, if we identify the private property, if they're all, contact the property owners of the private property and ask them if they're happy with that on their property, nine times out of ten, I think they're going to tell you if they're not. I think this city, I'll be able to go onto that private property and clean those camps up, and if you got to do it on a weekly basis, do it on a weekly basis. But if we get permission from the property owners, then I think we can do it. Now, I recognize, I've looked into this quite a bit. There's a lot of things that have hoops that you have to jump through. You have to post it for a certain period of time, get people a chance to get their belongings or whatever out of there on their own. Then apparently, you have to hold it for like twenty-four, forty-eight hours in the landfill or something. Now, I recognize that the city really doesn't have the resources available to do that, unhoused staff. Mayor keeps them busy all the time out there fixing traffic lights and things like that. So why not contract it up? Why not get, hire somebody with a backhoe and a dump truck, go once a week, go in and clean those places out? I don't know. It's just a thought. But the problem that I've had is that people call me and they say, Nick, we've got this vagrancy problem, and, and we got to do something about it. And I say, I know, but I'm a council. What can I do? And nobody really has, nobody really has a, a concrete positive answer. What can happen? So this, this is something that I've come up with. I don't know whether it would work or whether it wouldn't. But I'm going to bring it to our committee, let the committee kick it around a little bit, see if it's something they're likely to pursue. Again, I want to thank Anna for the work that she's doing cleaning things up. My gosh, it's a monumental task, and the way she's got her volunteers together and everything, it's a great thing. And the homeless shelter, for the people that absolutely need it. But for vagrants, we're going to have to deal with that separately.
Well, I like Anna, and I, you know, the vagrant, that, that's a word that I have a hard time using as well, because so many people, and, and I understand, you know, but it's just, we have so many people that, there's many reasons why they're staying out in those woods, and, and we're not the only community that have a problem with people not having somewhere to go. There are times when the shelters are full. There's so many, every situation is different. And, and we have talked about, one mission Wilmington began meeting back in January, and there's a group of volunteers that are very interested in doing regular point in times. It's required that we do a point in time, one time a year through Ohio, and we did that in January. But there's been discussions and about us going out with a group of volunteers to the camps and all over Wilmington, wherever we think there might be people struggling with housing securities, and just finding out what, what the issues are, having those conversations, meeting, you know, gaining trust and meeting folks to find out how we can help, what we as a coalition can do to help so that they can make the decision to come into one of the shelters, or if they need mental health treatment, or a drug, you know, drug and alcohol treatment. We would secure professionals in those fields that could go with us and maybe really be able to touch on the real reason, and just know that each individual has a story, and it's never the same as your own. And as I always say, they're both there, but for the grace of God, do I. And I just, you know, the, the times that we have met with folks that are out there in some of the camps or without a home, you know, there's always something that touches my heart within their story. And I just think that we need to show them that we care. I think that those of us who know how to help get them to the point they need to be, that we need to be there and really connect. We've had the opportunity to connect with a lot of folks that are not able or not willing to come into the shelter just by having them come to take showers, or come to the food pantry to get a cup of coffee. And those are opportunities that we have really been able to gain that trust and really sometimes have been able to turn lives around. And so I just think we all need to continue to keep hope in our heart and to have faith that we can catch each individual that is, is living, you know, in the woods or wherever they're living, or most do not have a home. And I, I feel privileged to have done this for twenty-nine years. Mayor Eadlin, Nick was the mayor when I first started. You all believed in me and trusted in me, and I know that you're going to do what's right, and I, you know, we just need as many people in our community to help with this project. So we hope that you will join the coalition, reach out, give us a call. If you'd like to be part of those regular point in times that we're talking about starting, we don't have a date yet, but we're working on it, let us know, because I think, I think we can do the right thing. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for coming up.
Wait, wait, I've got, I've got a question.
Okay.
Denise, I think this is a question for you. I'm, I'm looking on the sheet here, and I noticed that the veterans, homeless veterans went down significantly in two thousand twenty, and I know it's been several years since I've been on the board, the homeless shelter board. What has attributed to that? I mean, we go from five to one to two, and I noticed there's a significant drop. Has there been more help from the Veterans Association? Or how, how has that worked?
There have been a lot more parents during the pandemic, the prime of the pandemic. Oh, sorry. Thank you. During the prime of the pandemic, there were additional funds for emergency shelter services and for veterans. And so many of the veterans that were finding themselves at risk of homelessness were able, the prevention funds were available, and the veteran, local veterans departments were reaching out and helping them remain in their housing, or if they did become homeless, if they were not, they did not need to come to the shelter because there were security assistance available.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else in the council?
Yeah, and we're going to want to give a shout out to Jeff Rollins, who was the Antfords administration here. He, he really takes care of our voters when he knows.
Thank you.
And I will also comment, the, of all the sites Anna and I looked at, there was only one that appeared to be a camp. Everything else was just literally trash. And we get people to clean up the honey cell, which is what usually traps the trash, and then it can all blow the bad county. And here's the other thing that really got my attention. You know, and again, I know Anna, the Troy left, but we have six to seven hundred days that some of our cases.
You know, and again, I know Anna, but we have six to seven hundred days that some of our cases go on. A lot of repeat offenders. Sometimes the case is dismissed. And that comes down to our legal team that has come up with what I consider, I got this ahead of time, I don't know if you guys have had a chance to look at it yet or not, but I am really impressed with what Justin was planning on doing. Justin, would you like to come up?
Yeah, thank you. I have Josh Engel with me. Josh, Josh and I.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks for letting us speak tonight.
And also wanted to, you know, caveat this while it takes a community. And I think that currently Brett Reddick, our law director, and Dave Henry, they're doing a really good job with trying to triage things that are going on. But sometimes an outside perspective is a little bit good. And just, there's different ways to skin the cat and maybe we need to reevaluate what we're doing. Maybe this won't work at all. But I think it's probably time for me to kind of bring some of my experience from the county and maybe Josh to bring some of his experience and just, you know, try to find a way to work with the rest of the community, to work with the courts, whoever's the next municipal court judge, the county league court and staff, the defense attorneys in town, and find a more proactive solution for how we can move Wilmington forward together. So with that, Josh actually had a great idea of putting together a white paper a month or two ago and several different facets that will be important because not just working with our homeless folks that wanna have support, not just working on picking up litter, but it's also accountability. And I think that's where people wanna see. You know, from Clinton County's perspective, I came in with the cleanup Clinton County initiative. And we've cleaned up over a hundred properties in Clinton County. People have started paying taxes and we've gone after a lot of code enforcement. The city of Wilmington has started doing that on a regular basis. And I think it's really starting to make an impact. But having like a rules of emphasis in the MBA, let's focus on, you know, three second violations a little bit more than other areas. So that's what Josh and I are gonna talk about here today. If our PowerPoint's, you know, technology's a blessing and a curse. So I'm glad Andrew is dealing with this, not me right now, but I'll hand it over to Josh.
Yeah, we could probably do it without the PowerPoint. What we can do is, does people hear me okay? What we can do is make the PowerPoint available to everyone. We can make it available to council and email it out to everybody. But really the goal is tonight, for the few minutes we have, and I wanna thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mayor, for giving us this opportunity, is that, you know, speaking for myself, I'm not a social scientist. I don't have a lot of the specific answers. But what we can offer and what I can specifically hope to offer is some of the benefit of my experience. You know, I have worked as a prosecutor in two different states. I've worked for the state of Ohio. I've worked on policy issues, dealing with law enforcement, worked on homeland security issues. And now I go around the state representing law enforcement. So we wanted to share with you what we've learned from that. And what we've learned and what I hope that council and mayor, everyone can take away from this as we think about some policies to address the issues that people raise, is that community prosecution and community policing really works. And the idea is that when I was a prosecutor, this is, I wouldn't just sit in my office and wait for crimes to come to us, but we'd go out in the community, find out what's going on and act proactively to do that. And law enforcement should be doing that as well. Now, it's important to say, and we had a really nice slide that talked about the statistics for crime in the city. And these statistics align because especially when you're talking about nonviolent crimes, the crime rate has been down the last couple of years actually in the city. But there's still a perception out there that some people don't feel safe in certain areas of the city. And we need to address that because that's really important for economic development, really important for making sure that we have all the opportunities that we need. It's really important to acknowledge the feelings of people. Because this is what we refer to sometimes as broken windows policing, broken windows law enforcement. The idea that if you see problems and you see what the social scientists will call disorder, that that will lead to more disorder, lead to not people wanting to come into the area. And so now we, no, we're done with that. We're gonna give up, okay. But the idea is that can we use this philosophy of broken windows policing to build on the current success, to protect the community, rehabilitate the offenders, deter future crimes? And so what we would recommend, and in our white paper we recommend, is a couple things. First, that we aggressively target minor crimes, trespassing, litter, vandalism, crimes like that that really affect what we call the quality of life. And one of the things that we've suggested is, for example, an amendment to the city ordinance dealing with trespassing that would give prosecutors and police some additional tools to deal with repeat offenders. Because it's really important to separate between people who are just getting in trouble every now and then and people who are what I referred to the other day as the mayor as frequent flyers. And that's where we have to do. And so we also wanted to emphasize visibility is very important. Visibility of law enforcement, visibility of prosecutors in the community. I know that chief, I understand that there's gonna be a bike patrol coming out soon and hopefully. And that's really hopefully because it's really important, we found in my experience at least, that we have visible law enforcement that the community can see. Police officers on the street corners, police officers out of their cars, getting out there and knowing what's going on in the community so that people are seen. Same thing with the prosecutors. It's important for the prosecutors to be seen in the community and know what's going on. And so, and I just would add that the idea of code enforcement really fits in together with this idea that you are reducing disorder in the community and you are allowing people to build and feel comfortable and lead to all the development that is. So that's my thoughts, again, just the thoughts of someone who's worked in the area for years. And with that, I will turn it over to Justin.
So Josh and I have also come together with a few programs for consideration for city council. When you incarcerate people, there is an additional cost. We looked into the numbers to incarcerate someone for a day and our county jail is between $70 and $75 per day. Right now, the county jail is about 60% capacity. So there is room when you have frequent flyers in there to be in jail again. So these are the statistics that I received from the sheriff's department recently. I think it's really telling. We also have staffing issues for our local law enforcement. I think as our culture has changed, not as many young people want to get into law enforcement for whatever reason. And, you know, as a community, I hope we can be more welcoming and encouraging for law enforcement officials to come into the fray and serve their communities. Additionally, I think it was really important to listen to the homelessnessers folks. But I'm around downtown and there's some people that I know that have serious mental health issues and they need to have services at times, you know, maybe having a conversation at the state legislative level with forced institutionalizations for people that have schizophrenia out on the street and nowhere else to go. Or we as a community find ways for funding for those people that have a place where they're not out committing crimes or becoming victims of crimes. And lastly, we want to make sure that we're improving confidence in our system. We wanna be transparent in our process. We wanna be able to have a thoughtful process in how we're charging people, how we're asking for sentencing with the court. I think that we're doing that right now, but making that a little bit more publicly transparent will be helpful. And just working together. This isn't going to be a panacea, but we wanna see people be held accountable. Everyone has to do their part. If you see something, say something. Support our law enforcement and support, you know, everyone having a positive, respectful dialogue with one another is important where different people's ideas are shared and respected. So I think everybody in this room has the same positive intentions that they wanna see Wilmington become a better, safer place. So I hope that with some of these changes and some more additional thoughtful dialogue as well as accountability through the misdemeanor process, we can help make Wilmington a better place. So have you answered questions or?
At 60% occupancy with 40% housing beds, is that equated to?
I don't know how many beds. I know that there is the ability to house more folks in our county jail. From a capacity standpoint, now, capacity financially, that's another issue. Especially when a lot of the people coming into our county jail, they have other health issues or they're causing problems and they have to have baby centers there essentially. It's a strain on law enforcement.
Just in your job, you've talked about that. Some of the things that just really stand out, what are the glaring issues that I mean, are just basically head on, we're really up to zero now?
I think the areas of emphasis, I think our municipal prosecution is doing a good job. It's a triage. There's 50 cases on a Monday that they have to go for. I think being, really, some additional staffing might be necessary. Having prosecutors that can look directly at certain cases and say, you know, this person has been in here four times in the past six months. We gotta do something about it. And I think that we're doing a good job now, but it's an area that I'd really like to focus upon. And I see it in the county level where, you know, I've seen a guy for four zoning cases in two years and I know. So I think just having some more additional reps, that's where you focus more, hey, this guy's not gonna play ball with this, he's not gonna try to shake it up, his act. Let's show him that there is accountability and ask for jail time. Or if there's a gray area in the case, not all cases are black and white. There's gray areas, it's what you can prove. So managing those resources, it's a real challenge for all prosecutors. I think that Brett and Dave do a great job with it right now. And it's gonna continue to be a challenge as we have a really heavy dock in Wilmington.
Justin, I wanna thank you. And Josh, while I got you up here, you are the convention visitors bureau rep for the city. I heard they lost your lease. Can you bring us up to date on what's going on?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, my name is President. Yes, the convention visitors bureau, as people may know, is currently locked space across the, across the street, I guess across the street. That means it is no longer available to the convention visitors bureau. So there is a need to find new space. And the staff of the convention visitors bureau and some of the senior leadership have looked at various spaces, both downtown and outside of downtown. The sense of the board is that the board wants to have not only office space, but wants to have the space available to do various events and host various meetings. And so that space, they do not feel is available downtown. So at the moment, they are trying to negotiate a space. And I don't wanna say out loud where it is because I don't wanna ruin those negotiations. But there's a space still within the city limits, but outside of downtown that they are working on.
Well, actually, I actually wish I didn't ask now. That disappoints me because I really think the visitors bureau needs to be in our core downtown. I'm not sure they should be in the event business. I think their function is to, what do they say, be on the street and. Beds and stairs. I wanna get that backwards. So that's something to think about. Really like you guys.
I will convey that thought of Mayor's office and maybe council as well as the non-hemster to the other members.
Thanks. I kinda put you on the spot here.
Wait, 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 wait. I was nodding my head on that.
Okay.
I believe that they should also contribute to events, so.
But Jonathan, you're competing against private industry. And I don't think a government agency should compete against private industry.
I disagree. They need to be involved in events. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Well, I will, Mr. President, I will convey, I will convey the thought of the mayor and this committee as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Guess what?
You're done?
Back to you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate it. Osborne, do you have anything important?
Nothing, my Mr. President.
Safety service director, Mr. Shaw.
Hello, Mr. President. I have one piece of legislation tonight. It's resolution 2317, authorize the director of public safety to enter into an agreement with the board trustees of Washington Township, classes for fire and emergency services for five years. The contract is expired July 1st of this year. And I am asking for three readings, Mr. President. Just to give you some idea, we have been, had a great relationship with Washington Township. I look back 30 years, I don't know if it, I don't know how long it goes back for sure, but it's at least 30 years that we've had a great relationship with them. We've served approximately 22, almost 2,200 residents. Their mileage is 2.45 and minus a small bit of straightened feet that they keep, we get the balance and the mileage to serve them. It's a good relationship. Washington Township's on board, we're on board with it. And so we're asking, I'm asking for authorization to enter into the contract.
Thank you. We need the council to bring this legislation over to someone, introduce that, please.
Move to give resolution 2317, first reading, by title only.
Second.
motion, Osborne, second, Leirman.
Questions, President?
Yes.
How many dollars does that bring?
Just, I actually brought in 102,000. The city's got 102,000. I'm sorry?
How many runs to Washington?
I can get that, I mean, you're asking that, I'll get that for you. I have all that information.
And then if there are insurance proceeds that come back, like wife's cover runs and things like that, does that give us the?
Yes.
Any other questions? So we have a motion, second, for the first reading, resolution 2317. All favors, if the vote is aye or not?
Aye.
Any votes? Do we have first reading, please?
The resolution authorizing the director of public safety to enter into an agreement with the board trustees of Washington Township for the provision of fire and emergency medical services for the period July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2028.
Move to suspend the rules and regulations and give resolution 2317, second and third reading by title only.
Second.
Motion, second, for suspension of the rules. May we have roll call, please?
McKay.
Yes.
Snar.
Yes.
Leirman.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Albright.
Yes.
Eadlin.
Yes.
Motion carries. May we have second, third reading?
The resolution authorizing the director of public safety to enter into an agreement with the board trustees of Washington Township for the provision of fire and emergency medical services for the period July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2028.
Move for passage, resolution 2317, second.
Motion, second, for passage. Roll call, please.
Snar.
Yes.
Leirman.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Albright.
Yes.
Eadlin.
Yes.
And McKay.
Yes.
Thank you, resolution 2317, passes.
Thank you, just another, one other, actually two other things. Over the next several weeks, residents will be receiving a mailing. And what this is, it's gonna be from Service Line Warranties of America and they're announcing the availability of insurance for privately owned portions of water service lines and sewer laterals. This insurance is completely optional. So before you, when you receive this mailing, just know that it's completely optional. But I wanted you to be aware, what this entails, a lot of people don't realize that between the property boundary and your home, for watering and your sewer line, that's the homeowner's responsibility. This is an insurance for that, it'll be self-explanatory. The city is not making money on this, City Wilmington's not making money on this. So I want you to understand that. It's just we've seen a lot of residents have that situation come up where there's a break in their line and they're scrambling around. We just thought this could be an option for the community. And so you'll be receiving this in the mail, do with it whatever you would like. There's the phone number you can call for that. The last thing I have is for council, March 27th, we will be getting a, what's called a guaranteed maximum price of the new wastewater treatment plant. So on April 6th, there will hopefully be a public works committee meeting. Have you set that for sure yet? April 6th, public works committee meeting?
We have not, but we will.
Okay, I'm gonna be asking for a public works committee.
Because Michael knows we're doing it and he's.
Okay. And we will be presenting that guaranteed maximum price along with details of the plans and all that stuff for the new plan. So it'll be very informative, very eye-opening at that time. So that's on April 6th.
We certainly have that under control, sir.
Yep.
Brian, who did you say that letter was coming from?
Who was it coming from? It's, they are, I can, I wanna get it right. It is Service Line Warranties of America. It is Service Line Warranties of America, also known as SLWA.
CenterPoint sent a letter that I got yesterday regarding the same thing, so you might be getting two of them.
Really?
Because CenterPoint already sent them.
Okay, this one will have the Wilmington November one.
I got one last week.
This is for the service lines, correct? Yes. So Paul, where Paul? Paul, CenterPoint is for, I believe, for the gas project.
It says gas and water.
Yeah, really.
Interesting, okay. I've seen gas and water, I haven't seen.
Okay, I have not seen that one. Paul, did you want to mention what happened earlier today?
Yeah.
Paul is the, Paul Goodhue is the city engineering consultant.
Yeah, so thank you, Brian. I've got good news to bring back today. I was in Columbus at an engineering award ceremony today, and at the American Council of Engineering Companies of Ohio, they announced that our on luck avenue project had received an award for engineering excellence. And I just want to read a couple of notes about what this award means. So the engineering excellence awards competition is an annual program that brings well-deserved public recognition to Ohio's engineering industry by spotlighting engineering projects that demonstrate a high degree of uniqueness, ingenuity, and then value. Entries are evaluated by a panel of judges who rate each entry on the basis of its uniqueness and originality, technical value to the engineering profession, social and economic considerations, complexity, and how successfully the project met the needs, including time and budget constraints of the client, which obviously is the city of Wilmington. So we are a co-recipient of that award, and I just wanted, you know, let everyone know we have a project that we should ultimately be proud of. I also would not be surprised if the contractor who built the award, Jurgensen, chooses to chase it. Ohio Contractors Association, similar award. So I just want to make sure everyone in the room is aware that, you know, when you have an award-winning project, we are finishing up punch list items, so very close to getting to the finish line. We've just gotta wrap up a few things, but council members, mayor, we should have something to be very happy about right now, so.
Thank you, Paul.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Paul, I missed how much the cash award was.
Hey, Brian, how was David's drive?
You probably just chased it. So far, so far it's good. I haven't had any issues. So far, I think it's okay. I mean, you want to add anything?
No, left hand. The first couple of days, there were some issues with the barriers that were put up to close the road. They put them too far east, and so they got those between the road closure and the school. And so that made for a couple of difficult days for those parents because it was not clear that they could make it to the school and they had to go around these things. That got fixed, and so.
Bright Farms.
Oh, and Bright Farms, another thing, they were having a little bit of trouble with the turn radius in and out because of the barriers, but they called us this morning and we're working with them and the contractor and ODOC to get that fixed as soon as we can, so.
Big project.
It is.
But we're gonna get through it. Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Moving into reports in action, City Revitalization Committee, Mr. McKay.
No report, Mr. President.
City Services Committee, Mr. Eadlin.
No report, Mr. President. However, we're talking about the Finance Committee.
Okay. So Finance Committee, Mr. Albright.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two items this evening. First item is ordinance twenty-three fifteen, establishing new funds. Our document outlines that pretty well, but I'll read through that from Auditor Vance. All the above funds are established to track grants in the city, so those are four different fund accounts from the notes we have here. Auditor Vance, do you want to clarify specifically anything else besides that for myself or the council?
You passed legislation last time on several of these. And when there is a specific revenue stream, it must have its own fund to track those things. So that's why we have those. There is one supplemental that is with respect to this, one of the new funds, and you'll see other supplementals as we get numbers tied down specifically for these. But this is a necessity when we have the dollars coming to the city in the way we must track them.
Any questions about that? Seeing none, I'm gonna give the first reading only on ordinance twenty-three fifteen by Title Only.
Second.
First file, second by Osborne. First reading only. Ordinance twenty-three fifteen, all favors, if I would say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? First reading, please.
In ordinance establishing new funds.
I move to suspend the rules and regulations, give ordinance twenty-three fifteen, second and third reading by Title Only.
Second.
Motion, second, first, suspension of rules. Roll call, please.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Eadlin?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Motion carries. May we have second, third reading?
In ordinance establishing new funds.
I move for passage, ordinance twenty-three fifteen, that's right.
Second.
Motion, second, for passage. Roll call, please.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Eadlin?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-three fifteen passes.
And our second item is two supplemental appropriations. It's twenty-three sixteen. To first, Auditor Vance alluded to, and the note from F. McGee says supplemental is needed to pay the invoices. So the Royal Wind Road Relocation Project Water System Fund will be reimbursed from OWDA, one zero one two five. That's the first one. Our second one is from Chief, from Chief Thithen for supplemental to purchase two Dodge Cruisers replaced, two cruisers being taken out of service. Any questions for him or anyone else?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. President, this is the second time in, I think, about six months that a supplemental appropriation involving a city services department has been brought directly to Finance Committee and short-circuited to City Services Committee. Our committee might very well have had questions about a supplemental appropriation like this, but you've not given us a chance to ask. Now, I'm gonna vote for this tonight because I want the chief to get his cruisers. I imagine he probably has a line on this and can get them fairly quickly. Is that right, chief?
Right now, we're looking about a fourth, six months. Wait. That's why. Yeah, we're still, we ordered one in October. We're still waiting on it.
There's a lot of questions we could have asked about that, but we're not given the opportunity because somebody decided to shortcut my committee, and I don't like that. As I said, I'm gonna vote for it tonight, but if something, where a supplemental appropriation involves one of my departments, I want my committee to be gone. Otherwise, I will not vote for it.
I want to apologize to you for that oversight.
Thank you. Any additional questions?
Or comments?
Right. Seeing none, I move to give the first reading only on ordinance twenty-three sixteen by Title Only.
Second.
Motion, second, first reading, ordinance twenty-three sixteen, all favors, if I would say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? May we have first reading, please?
In ordinance, making supplemental appropriations.
I move to suspend those regulations here, ordinance twenty-three sixteen, second and third reading by Title Only.
Second.
Motion, second, for suspension of rules. May we have roll call, please?
Albright?
Yes.
Eadlin?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Motion carries. May we have second, third reading?
In ordinance, making supplemental appropriations.
I move for passage.
Second.
Motion, second, for passage. Roll call, please.
Eadlin?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
In ordinance twenty-three sixteen passes.
No additional items, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Judiciary Committee, Mr. Perk is not with us tonight. Is Mr. McKay gonna have a word?
Yes, I'll be handling Judiciary, Mr. President. Thank you. We have three items tonight, and our first one is a third reading on ordinance, just admitting sections about animals and fowl of Wilmington Top Five ordinances. We've had, we've had three readings on this now, and I want to ask if there's any questions about it before I make a motion. Well, I'll move for the third reading of ordinance twenty-three oh nine.
Second.
Motion by McKay, second by Albright, third reading, ordinance twenty-three oh nine. May we have roll call, please?
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Eadlin?
Yes.
Third reading passes. May we have third reading, please?
In ordinance, amending certain sections and adding certain sections to chapter five zero five, animals and fowl of the Wilmington Top Five ordinances.
Move for passage. Motion, second, for passage, ordinance twenty-three oh nine. Roll call, please.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
We didn't get a second.
I was gonna say, I was gonna ask, I did not get the second written down, so that's because it didn't have.
All right. We have a second one.
Second.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I'm gonna restart the roll call, please. Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Eadlin?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Apologize. Motion carries to the ordinance twenty-three oh nine.
All right, thank you. Our next piece of legislation is a second reading on the Plenary Planning of Unit Development for the DDC Management. I know there are several people here tonight that wishes to listen and speak, but before we get to that, we are going to make a motion and a second, and then we will have discussion. So that's, that's how this will work. We are going to invite Kirk Ritter up to answer questions. He's got a little bit of a presentation that will hopefully answer a lot of questions, and then we will entertain questions from the audience. I ask that you please raise your hand to be recognized and just not shout things out. I will call upon you. I have significant experience with hand raising in my auction experience. So I'll see your hand, trust me, and we will get to you in an orderly fashion. If you shout, you will be given a warning. If you shout again, you will be given another warning. And then after that, we'll talk. Just please make sure you do it in an orderly fashion, so.
We probably would want people to recognize themselves.
Yes, we will.
Name and address, and would we want them to come over and also make their comment?
Well, with Kirk up here, I didn't know if we could just have them stand from their chair. How would that work, Andrea?
I prefer that they come up so that they can speak into the microphone.
Okay.
And that way, everyone at home can hear as well.
Okay, that's fine.
Take our time and get.
Yeah, well, we're gonna take our time. Everybody's gonna have a chance, so don't worry. So with that, I'll make a motion for the second reading of ordinance twenty-three fourteen.
Second.
Second?
Motion by McKay, second by Albright.
Okay, we will now open the floor for discussion. Kirk, I'll invite you up. That way, we can get questions answered that were questions in the first reading and also in the public hearing, and then we'll rock and roll from there. And I appreciate the patience from everyone.
Just checking, can everyone hear me okay?
Good.
Good evening. Well, Kirk Ritter with DDC Management. Happy to be here again, mayor and council for the second reading to, you know, talk about any questions or comments you have from the last reading, so I'm kind of just, I'm really here. I don't have any presentation. We've submitted some additional materials that I can discuss. I'll try to go over a summary from the last hearing and answer that. And if there's any follow-up questions from yourselves or the audience, we'll answer. We also have our engineer here as well, so it's working. Item number one, well, I'm not gonna jump into the elevations that we're doing right away, so I'll get to that. The first concern from the last hearing had to do with drainage in the southwest corner. You know, we've gone back and looked at that, and we've decided to implement a four-inch underdrain that would be in the location of the soil along the paths of lots. It slots eighty-eight through ninety-two along the rear. Thank you, Andrea. So this is the southwest corner of a zoomed-in snapshot. And so we've, we're incorporating a four-inch underdrain where we were raising the soil along the rears of lots eighty-eight through ninety-two, and then also south of lot ninety-two. Just, I'll come up here and kind of show you what I refer to. So that is how we have decided to move forward with the drainage concerns. There was a concern about the connectivity to Kentucky. I think we kind of maybe addressed that issue at the last council, how we're showing a sidewalk connection, but we're not taking the route to Kentucky. We are showing the right-of-way for our future connection, but not just proposing a sidewalk currently. Concerns about the set.
Well, we'll let you speak. No, no, you're doing fine. Then we'll take questions once he is done explaining everything.
There was concern about setbacks and the homes being too close together. We are proposing a five-yard setback, I think there's examples in the, in other parts of the city where this is the case. So there would be a ten-foot minimum distance between the buildings, and that would meet the zoning care and also the fire code. I know there was a comment about the HOA, and if there will be one, and Counselor, Counselor Eadlin, I know you requested to see that on the plans, and that's no problem. We typically don't have that on the construction drawings. We can, it's typically on the plat, which I believe is approved by council later on.
Approved by planning commission.
So it does not matter. We can put it on any plane and. Just a, yeah. I know there was questions on the, the one ingress and egress on the north portion of the site. Sorry, Andrea, if you can pull up the overall plan.
Oh, this has all the construction stuff in it. Sorry. And, I'm almost done. That's pretty good, but.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you. So I know early on, we had discussions with staff and the fire department, and the one access was acceptable. I, I'm not sure what else we need to do to take that further, but don't listen up. I know there was a concern about the width of the lots regarding garage and driveway, and this kind of.
I'll get it. I don't know what you want.
Uh, this is fine. So the lots are forty feet wide, and a typical garage is here shown as a, the opening is eighteen feet, or sixteen, eighteen feet, and the driveway would be sixteen feet. So you have twenty-four feet of distance that the driveway is not being blocked. So there is ability to park on the street. So there is ability to park on the street between homes. You also have, you have two-car garage, you can fit two cars in there, and then there's also a driveway that you can have cars tandem. So, you can have really four cars parked on one lot. That, that is, and, and then we, we were asked to provide elevations, which we have provided, um, examples of. I don't know if we wanna go through all of them, but, or if there's any questions from council about them that were provided. But, here too. Again, we, we don't have a builder lined up, we're talking to a couple, but, um, it is hard to commit to specific building elevations at this time.
Okay, I agree.
Yes, I'm finished with your answer.
Okay, alright, I saw, I saw Dave's hand first, and then Nick, and then we'll come to you, so, well, you're okay? Nick, go ahead.
Uh, just a couple of things, uh, first of all, I appreciate what you have on the drainage, I think that would work well. I, I got three questions, I guess, and one of them is Kentucky Avenue, and maybe this press would be covered across the planning commission. And I understand some of their concerns about Kentucky Avenue. Was any consideration given to making the, from the current dead end of Kentucky Avenue into a development one-way in? That was done once before at the city, it's a lanyard, lanyard, oh, government, uh, but Nelson had it. Uh, it was too narrow for a two-lane street, and so they allowed to have a portion of a one-way traffic. Was any consideration given by planning commission?
Thank you. You feel about Kentucky?
Yeah.
One-way in?
Yeah, the issue there. Only, only on his, only on his new development. Uh, which one-way would start at the current dead end of Kentucky Avenue?
I don't recall any of that discussion at planning commission. Um, there was, I believe, potential discussion about an emergency access only, um.
That, that is, but that's, that's a real concern, but if, if a date, if made it one-way, you have to see that.
That's, that's, well, then you're gonna be forcing everything along South Street. But, but you're talking about one-way in?
Right, one-way in.
Then the only way they could be, you know, go to South Street.
South Street.
No, no, we make it one-way, you're talking about bringing it one-way in this way? Here's Lincoln, here's Kentucky.
You just keep it back out, right?
Yes.
Isn't that what you're saying?
Yeah.
This would not be one-way, I don't believe.
Like this, right?
The city of Jerry might be able to talk to this a little better.
I'm just bringing it up, it's something that was done lots before.
Yeah, we, actually, we were trying to keep traffic off, um, Kentucky Avenue.
Correct. So we, we had a problem with bringing traffic in on Kentucky Avenue. Because of the southbound traffic on, on Zini Avenue, there's a dangerous situation that we can't put a left turn lane in there. It's the speed reduction when it drops as it enters the city. Corp limit's from fifty, fifty-five miles an hour essentially, down to thirty-five around a curve with a culvert. It's not feasible to build a turn lane there. So without that turn lane, it's an unsafe intersection, and so that's one of the contributing factors to not wanting to have traffic enter on Kentucky Avenue. The other one, as you mentioned, is subs dangerous street width, and also the pavement buildup, so adding additional traffic in that area. So, that was the reason why. However, we wanted to make sure we had the provision if Kentucky Avenue is ever improved, or if the corp limit moves further north, and we read, uh, we're able to change the speed limit there, change the characteristic of Zini north of that point. We wanted to have the provision to be able to put that connection in the future. So that's why the right-of-way is being, uh, dedicated to place it there. But at this point in time, I do not believe it's a safe connection to be made, both for Kentucky Avenue itself as well as on Zini, so, so that came up through the planning commission in my review.
And, and the south portion does have two, the, the, so that there's been changes to it.
Just comment on the safety issue. Um, I understand that, uh, and we got a written confirmation from the fire chief that he believes that the state has a one, influence accident in the north portion. I can disagree with that, but I'm not, I'm not the same group.
That's all I'm standing for.
Question number, garage, your, your, your little floor plan shows that there's nineteen people.
Well, you. Correct.
Yes. How wide's the garage?
Um, I, honestly, we're, we're not, I didn't get those conclusions for you, but.
If it's, if it's only nineteen, if the garage is only nineteen people, well, you're gonna have to go through the garage door like this, and you just, two sets of steps to go up out of the garage and in the house. So that takes two feet off the nineteen, that takes seventeen feet.
Fourteen.
A width, a seventeen-feet width. Um, then you've got two seven-foot cars. And that's fourteen, and now you've got a foot between the wall and car, a foot between the two cars, and a foot between the, the side wall.
Um, we did provide the floor plans, um, as well, I'm not sure if this had dimensions on it, but we nineteen-four, nineteen-four about that.
Does it say on the, yeah? They always got a pickup truck here. I'm just bringing this up.
No, it's, it's nineteen-eight. Hold on, hold on, just a second, I'll see if you can talk. You wanted the dimensions, I'm giving it to them, nineteen-four to nineteen-eight.
Nineteen-eight, so, eighteen, I know it's gonna be, hard for a little fella with my feet to get out of that car.
Yeah, it's.
Throwing that out there, 'cause I was, I was about to talk through it, huh?
It is tight, um, I can't deny that, but the orders, okay. These are their designs, their floor plans, not ours, and it, it works.
Well, may, may be better. Would you, would you, uh, would you stipulate it may be very difficult to get four cars into that, I mean, you gotta get to the driveway, uh, and you could get one in the driveway.
I, I agree with that. Tells you to be in storage and things like that, yeah.
Um, and then the third thing that I had, I'm still hung up on this, on, on the bridge between the two. Now, I read from, from the summary that, uh, the, one of the considerations was that if the parcel, not your parcel, but the parcel of the water plant was to develop, then the bridge should be put in. But, who puts that bridge in? That's what in Times and City Streets, and so it would then be the city's responsibility to put in that bridge, and I think we all know the bridge's cost, uh, right now, it's gonna cost, right, it's not how much it's gonna cost. Be very expensive. I, I'm, I'm foggy on the thought process for all this, really.
I can speak to that. Just real quick, um, I mean, the thought process, Nick, was that the tax base from the subdivision wouldn't be significant enough for the city to take on the, the lifetime of maintenance for that bridge. So, as the tax base expands through future development, we would use economic development tools such as taxi committee financing to help offset the, the installation of that new infrastructure. Thank you, Don, I'll start the city.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Councilman Eblin. Uh, Dave, you were up next.
Well, I got something for you. David Ruff, one-six-three, more south. Alright, is this a two-step project, two-stage project? Just the south side, then you're gonna do the north side, or you're doing it all at once?
Only two phases.
That's what I thought. So if the south phase doesn't work out, then the north one's not gonna happen? Okay. Uh, in the, uh, let's see, uh, is this part of a government housing project?
No.
Okay. The red flags that I saw last week was, at one time, somebody said, you're not gonna sell the houses for two-hundred thousand dollars. And then the answer was, uh, then we have to look at what they can rent for. Okay, and then, uh, it was brought up that builders are only gonna pay the same amount for a lot, regardless whether it's forty-one feet or forty-five feet. Why is that our fault? You can't get two cars parked in front of a forty-one-foot wide lot. Even in the traffic study, they're using twenty-five feet for a car. So, that's another one. Uh, I also heard that you're not even going to finish the walking path, you're just gonna grade it.
That is the trail that's in the middle along the creek.
And that's on the north side?
It's south.
The plans I saw was on the north side.
Sorry for that mistake.
Uh, you know, this all started off at ninety-two lots. You know, I don't know why they need more, but you're doing your job to try and get as much as you can. Uh, the traffic study, I have some questions about that. Even on page three, it says that, uh, DDC is supposed to put a turn lane at Michigan, but there's no right of A, A Y, which I don't remember what that is, but, uh, and you go down to all the other, you know, the appendices or whatever, everything that has to go with Michigan says it needs to have a turn line. And then also, it was stated on page twelve that in consulting with Goodhue Consulting, they decided not to include Wilmington Court in this study. Why was that? They're only thirty-five feet away, there's seventy cars in there. And when they did the traffic study, they only counted cars for two hours on one day in the morning, and two hours in the afternoon on July fourteenth. They didn't even count the cars coming into Michigan, they only counted Kentucky, and then when Kentucky wasn't in the play anymore, oh, we'll just add twenty percent to Michigan. Michigan get used a whole lot more than Kentucky. And how come Michigan and North South Street didn't get included in this study? That's gonna add more traffic than any of the other intersections. So, you know, I see this as being a transient neighborhood. People aren't gonna come here and live for twenty years, they're gonna come here until they can find enough money to move out, ten houses, or ten feet away from each house. You know, that's how I see it, the picture there, that looks like a nice house, but it's not ten feet away from another house in the picture. So, and in this traffic study, there was no past through trips even counted. In other words, like, you go down Florence to get over, none of that was counted. So, you know, I see red flags all over this. Let's see, is there anything else here? And, you know, the gang mailboxes, I don't know any other suburb that has gang mailboxes. Not as far as housing. It's either apartments, it's a trailer court, or it's condos. I just think it makes it look bad, so, I don't see anybody wanting to be there any length of time. So, there it is.
Thank you, Dave. Would anybody like to respond to any of his questions? Taylor, I saw you had.
Yeah, I, I just, just real quick.
I just have one thing. I do know that in the new Timberland subdivision, the post office is requiring panels of mailboxes. They will not put mail, they will not put, um, mailboxes at the.
I drove in there, and there was mailboxes all around there right now.
They, they have.
It's outdated policy, every new subdivision, the postal service makes you do this. You go out seventy-three, there's a new subdivision in Chester Township called Sunset Meadows. They're building million-dollar houses, they all have cluster mailboxes there as well.
Not the place where they're building, where they're putting new houses in. I just had this conversation with that, like, I don't, you know, there you go, and with that subdivision, and I was really surprised, so.
And we're doing all of our.
That's, that's all I was gonna say.
The second one of Glenn have those?
All of our other subdivisions.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Cluster mailboxes, the second one of Glenn have those?
New ones. Any new mailboxes.
Okay, alright.
Oh.
Okay, uh, let's see, your, what?
I, I got one more question. I'm, I'm sorry, I got one more question. Who's in charge of the HOA? Is that gonna be you?
Yes, we'll be the planner to start, um, we will handle the deficit until eventually when we turn it over to the, the residents, which will, they'll be, they'll be in their HOA there.
Okay, okay.
And, I guess one other thing I was gonna mention was, the tax base that comes off these properties is probably gonna be only enough to, uh, keep the pump station up to code and keep it in maintenance. So, and I also, in my research, saw that an eight-inch line for a sanitary that was considered full, one was half-full. And you're putting four inches into an eight-inch line?
Taylor?
Yeah, I just wanted to provide counsel additional context within the city from the last, uh, meeting discussion. So, they had asked me to find, you know, just look around, find some example, uh, examples of similar setbacks, uh, similar conditions. Uh, it really did not take much time, and this is a trio of houses on North Lincoln. These lots are thirty-nine feet wide. Uh, I don't think anybody would propose, uh, getting rid of these homes, there are homes of different styles throughout the city that have different lot widths, different setbacks.
How, how, how.
Hold on.
Uh, this is along Florence, this is along Florence, these are all five-foot sideyard setbacks. The, uh, homes in this area, uh, all are about a thousand square feet in dimension. Uh, houses along Kentucky Avenue also have five-yard setbacks averaging twelve to thirteen hundred square feet in dimension. So, you know, it's not uncommon to find a range of house sizes in the city of different styles, from, uh, single-family ranches to historic homes that are two-story, um, so I just wanted to share that.
It's just a visual.
Just a visual.
You're, you're next, and then Mr. Thomas.
I'm sure Lincoln Street, uh, sure.
The hell is there on Lincoln Street?
Please state your name and address, please.
My name's Randy Gray, I live on one-four-three East Ruby Avenue. Those houses, if you notice, there's no garages in front, garages are, they all have barns behind them. They're also more than ten-foot apart, so if there's a fire, you know, or, or somebody's sick in that house, you don't smell in the other house through the windows, it's, that's a complete, you're comparing oranges and apples.
I just wanted to share similar lot width sizes, this wasn't about architecture. You could find houses, you know, the, the houses on.
That's true, that, that, those houses were built before fifty.
Sure, and there are houses further down that are at ten-foot apart on five-foot sideyard setbacks on Florence, Kentucky, and several other locations in the city.
I live in that neighborhood, no, it's not, it's the same.
Okay.
Show me.
You talking about, these houses here?
These rows of houses.
Those are sixteen feet apart at least.
Amen.
They're flats, they five-yard setbacks.
These houses here?
Same thing.
I, I grew up in Southridge. That's six, that's ten feet, from that wall to my hand here. Something going on next door, it's just, it's terr, it's a terrible plan. Well, I'm, I'm done.
Mr. Thomas. I don't need the mic. How wide are the streets of, on, on north-south of the, uh, the houses? Mr. Thomas, could you please state your name and address? I almost said, say my addresses for obvious reasons, because I don't want people knowing my address. I live in that neighborhood right there, Tony Thomas. How, how wide are the streets there?
I don't, I didn't measure the streets, I was looking at lots. I was asking, look at lots, I mentioned.
So, so my, my, my biggest question is, if you have, if you have a, a, a complex, and you have two cars parked in front of the street, and people can't get ambulances, and, and, excuse me, if, if people can't get ambulances, or let alone fire trucks, would that not be an issue? Because I know that street, I live right around the corner, and I've seen fire trucks go through, two, two cars parked on that road, you're not gonna do that with, with, with the roads you're talking about.
So Kentucky right there has.
So, Kentucky right there has five-yard setbacks. It's one of the narrowest.
My question is, if there's a, if there's a car in the development that we're speaking of right now, if there's a car in front on each side, will a fire engine make it through there?
Yes, yes.
Can you show me the map, please?
I don't have to show you the map. It's a 30-foot wide street, two cars parked each side is eight feet plus eight feet, 16 feet. I got 14 feet to fit a fire truck through. Yes, I can fit that through. A 12-foot length is a standard highway length.
How many people automatically fit your map parking? Thank you. Because you have to, you have to understand something. There's people that park three or four feet off the, off the street and nobody does anything about. Do you take that into account? No, you don't.
My fire truck is nine feet wide.
Your map, sir, is convenient for you. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else like to speak? Mr. Knowles.
Mr. Knowles, if I could be helpful or, just a couple of really quick things. We talked about the 31 feet road, right? Taylor just said 37 feet is the narrowest road we have in town. I believe that's what you just said.
No, I said Kentucky is an example, I said Kentucky is an example of a narrow road.
Oh, okay. I misunderstood you. That's fine. So, we're going from 37 to 31. We put two cars, I live on Brook. My street's right at that same, okay? I can tell you there's a reason that this car is parked in the grass. You see that? Do you know why it's parked in the grass? So it doesn't get hit on the street.
Amen, Jamie.
And that's exactly why it's parked there. So, if you've got, drive down Brook. Just drive down Brook. That's all I got to say.
I'm familiar with it.
Okay. People park on the street, they park in the grass. I don't like it. It tears up the property. It tears up that waterway that continually has to be fixed. It's not going to be any different in this new subdivision. Okay? We are comparing $150,000 homes with $225,000 homes. Because that's what you said they're going to be. These are 1,000 square foot. The subdivision is going to be 1,600 square foot. Once again, apples and oranges. On top of that, like I mentioned before, previously in the, in the last meeting, 225,000, 325,000. What's the difference? I get 100,000. There are homes in this subdivision that have recently sold for 300-plus thousand dollars. How does that, how does a 225,000 home not bring down property values a mile away? How does that happen? If those are worth 225,000, mine ought to be worth 10,000.
I think we admitted exactly the 225.
That's what that chief paper says.
I'm not sure what you.
That's exactly, it's what you handed out. Or what somebody handed out.
It was me.
And I'm assuming that it was an answer to the questions from the last that you would give.
We, it's hard for us right now with the market and not having a builder to commit to a certain price. We're saying at a minimum, it's going to be over 200, like our Jonathan Bills said at our last meeting. If they're hired, that's great. I mean, we hope so, but right now I can't commit to a price and I'm not sure we really have a number either.
Okay, I.
I think I, I.
They were saying 200,000 plus in the first meeting.
I said the home was slated to sell for mid-200.
And when you factor in options, you just don't know that a, that a builder gives to select, it couldn't invade us.
Could not agree more. Totally understand where you're coming from. And, you know, I know Mr. Bennett's in the back making smirks about what I'm saying, but every time I bought a home or sold a home, there's been a study done on the homes in the area that have sold. I'm not realtor. I'm just going by what the realtors have done with me in the past. Now, maybe things have changed and we just haphazardly decide that our home's worth a million dollars when it's worth 10,000. I don't know. And I know that's far-fetched, but this subdivision, to me, is far-fetched. It's across from a low-income apartment. I don't know that anybody's thought about that. It's across from, yes, now it's a veterans' building, but it looks like it's about to fall down directly across the street. How are you going to get people to come in and pay more than, than what these homes are worth that are up here on the screen across from things like that? Lincoln Street. Has there been a study on what is needed to build that street up? If there's 100 and some homes, there's going to be a lot more traffic. You might as well plan on 113 homes, 220 cars, inch, if not more. That's a lot more traffic in and out. If they're 200,000 homes, both people are going to be working, in my opinion. So, you know, what's the cost? Who puts the cost? What's needed? How large is the lot in that picture that was shown of that home? That is a beautiful home, by the way.
So, the width of the product is 30 feet wide, maximum, so you wouldn't set that actually in.
Correct. But what is the, what is the square footage of that lot? Because that lot does not look like a 5,000 square foot lot.
That first picture?
That first picture. Not these. Your, your home that you proposed to build.
I'm sorry, what do you?
Just that very first picture, the elevations.
The elevations?
Yes.
The example elevations, yeah.
Yeah, there we have it.
Thank you.
A lot size of that picture?
Yes.
That, I mean, that's just, it's illustration. It's not specific to this.
But my point is this. We were to see pictures of what it would be. That's not, I mean, that's a proposed picture that looks beautiful. But I would say in reality, you could see the homes on both sides of that home in that picture. So, it's a misconception to the, to the community, both here and at home, watching this on TV, on their phone, computer, whatever, as to what these homes are going to look like. If I saw that and you said, that's what we're going to build, it's going to look just like that, I'd be okay with that. Stacked on top of each other, and I don't mean living space on top of the garage, I mean the homes stacked on, on top of each other. We're comparing stuff that was built in the 50s. The lot sizes back then, okay, there's a reason that we made bigger lot sizes, I'm assuming, right? I mean, why are we going backwards instead of forward? That's, that's my, my take on this. And what's the cost? What, what is the estimated cost? Because I know you can't tell me exactly of the HOA for this.
I can't. We have not dug that deep into that enough, but it will be a responsibility.
What are they in Florida? Because that's what we got told last week, that you guys have built this same home, the same type of subdivision in Florida that are getting 200,000-plus dollars for. I'm assuming it has an HOA as well, correct?
It depends on the amount of open space, different fountains, things they have to take care of. I can't, as apples.
So, what about the one in Springfield? Isn't it comparable to this, too?
In terms of the amount of open space, I would have to compare. The HOA budgets are totally separate. We have not dug into that for this.
Okay. Because I would think that would be another important selling point. If the HOA fee is $100 a year, or if it's $1,000 a year, $100 is pretty valid. $1,000 may not be. That's just my.
I agree with that. That's something that the block, when they sell these homes to future owners, that they're going to go away.
Gotcha. I just, to me, that's, that's important to, for me as a community member, to understand everything behind something like this before I can say, yep, you know, I'm good with that or no, I'm not good with that. Just, just my thought process, so, that's all I have.
Thank you, Jamie. Okay, now, your, okay, Mr. Thomas.
My question is, that's kind of kicking an elephant there here. But is there any, my question is, did you guys just like pick Wilmington out of a hat? Did, I mean, based off the economics of Wilmington, Ohio? I can't say we're the most successful city in the world, based off. But the best question is, how does you pick Wilmington? Is there somebody on that panel up there or beside you over there that's, that's going to be profiting off this, this, this whole thing here?
No, sir.
So, who invited you?
Excuse me?
Who invited you to come to Wilmington? Just, I mean, did somebody invite you to come here?
We were looking at tertiary markets. We're in the Dayton area.
So, what does this market tell you?
We believe in Wilmington. That's why we're here, trying to get a proper.
You believe in Wilmington? What about Wilmington do you believe in?
The job market.
Tell me about the job market, sir. I live here.
We know there's a new Honda plant.
Is it here now?
I'm not sure if I can answer, you can answer that you're going to be happy to us.
Well, of course not, because I live here and you don't. You're here for the money, as are some of the things on the street.
Tony, you're getting out of hand, buddy.
No, I'm really not.
Yes, you are.
Am I getting out of hand, Jamie?
I, I have to agree with you. He does have viable questions.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I love the way you interrupt every time somebody raises up good viable questions.
That's my job, Tony.
He's passionate.
I'm not a Nazi. I served this country for you.
Are you fucking Nazi?
You can't calm my speech.
Yes, I can.
I'm speaking, no, you can't.
Yes, I can.
Try, I'll sue you. Do it.
You won't be arrested.
I'm a United States Marine, sir. What are you? How did the city get on?
President of the city?
Let's move on.
Please, please don't interrupt.
I'm sorry, do you have any insight to?
I mean, I can try to.
I mean, I know that how they came here was they contacted us. We did not contact them. They asked to set up an informal meeting. We did not know who they were. They were not sent to us.
Nor has anybody in the community.
No, no one sent them to us. They're just developers who are looking at potential job growth in the general area.
But this gentleman said he believed in our, our community. I just want to know what he knows about our community.
There's a need for housing, I know.
There is.
Yeah, there is.
Just that they're willing to make financial, I don't know.
Is there conscious people moving in, into Wilmington or out of Wilmington?
Taylor has more job information.
Let me just back up a little.
Go ahead, chuckle, all you need. I got all your answers, brother.
Okay, thanks. So, I don't know why we have the questions and the answers, but we do have a realtor posts a sign that a lot is for sale. They see the MLS listing, they look at the market condition for the community.
Which is what? Stop. Which is what? What is our market and our condition?
We have a, we have a serious need for housing in this community.
So, the economy is booming here now?
It's not just the economic factors. There is economic growth in this.
Where's it at?
Ask any employer in this.
I'm asking you, sir.
Okay. We have several employers that are growing. We have a new Amazon operation that's a few years old.
Most of which have helped on the side of building because of the homeless issue.
Respectfully, let me finish my.
Please let him speak.
We haven't had new housing built in this community for decades. This is the first, we have a subdivision over in Timberglenn that is the first expansion in the subdivision since Timberglenn was built, which was the last subdivision that was built. Okay? Well, you have to, your population does grow, even if, if things aren't boom.
Our population is growing, but it's homeless people.
It just, and.
It's homeless people, sir. Not people with $200,000 or $100,000.
Okay, all right, yeah. We're done.
We need, we do need housing in this community.
For who?
For people to live here, for workers, for, for new residents, you know? Lots of people.
I think it's time that we end this discussion.
Well, I just, I do want to bring it back because we started this conversation with some of the concerns about code and homelessness and other issues. We do have challenges in this community. And to be successful as a community, we need to see continued growth. We need to be an attractive place to keep residents and attract new residents. That requires housing. You have to have modern housing, you have to have new housing, you have to have different types of housing. We're fortunate.
How many of these houses are homeless?
I'm sorry?
How many of these houses are homeless people? Yeah, those.
Those perspectives.
Yeah, yeah. How many of the.
I'm talking about the.
You're talking about a problem, but not a solution. You're talking about bringing houses that nobody can afford.
Well, they're talking about that, that they're running out, correct?
Okay, all right.
If they don't sell, they'll be running.
Yes. You were the last speaker, then, then we're going to vote.
Randy Gray, again, 143 East Ruby Avenue. You said Wilmington's growing. I've lived here for 65 years. Wilmington's been 13,000 people when it had the airbase and nighty base in the 60s. They both closed. Population went down. Airborne built up. We got to 13,000 again. Airborne closes. We go down. We're coming back up right now. I don't know if we're 13,000 yet, but for 65 years Wilmington's been 13,000 people.
Thank you, brother.
So, how much we grown? How much we grown in 65 years?
Those numbers aren't on board.
Okay.
You can look, I mean, you can, you can look that up and go back and, and research it. We're 13,000 people and have been 13,000 people for like 65 years.
For a long time, yeah.
Okay. All right, Mr. President, we have, thank you, Randy. We have a first and a second, so we can now proceed with the voting. And thank you all for your constructive comments. Okay, we, we have a first and a second on resolution 2315. Any other comments? Yep. Would you like to have a roll call? Or is it ready?
So, secretary.
Secretary.
Lerman.
No.
Osborne.
Yes.
Albright. Eber.
Yes.
McKay.
Yes.
Snar.
Yes.
Those are curious, but we have a second.
An ordinance approving the preliminary planned unit development plan for DDC Management LLC and demanding the zoning map by changing the zoning of real property to include a PUD planned unit development overlay on T and traditional neighborhood parcels located on Lincoln Street in the city of Wilmington, Ohio.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'll ask for the third reading at the next meeting. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Just, just a reminder for people who are, who are here that may not have been here for previous meetings. If we vote yes on this for the reading, it does necessarily reflect how we will vote on the ordinance itself, which will come probably at the next council meeting. There'll be a third reading, and we'll vote whether or not to hold the third reading, which it looks like we held the second reading right now. Then the president will call the question. All in favor, signify by someone, and then we'll vote. For the passage of the ordinance. At that point in time, we can vote yes or no, whether the ordinance passes. So, this does not necessarily mean we're voting in favor. Even the yes votes don't necessarily mean we're in favor of the subvention.
We're, we're just getting it to the third reading.
It moves it along in this.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Councilman. Okay.
President or Chairman, whichever. May I ask a procedural question concerning this? So, next time, we'll be bringing the legislation forward for its final and last reading. Are there stipulations that you want to have in that legislation in order for it to move forward? This is the time that we would need to know that so that... Because next it goes to Planning Commission. And so if there are stipulations that you don't see in the legislation that you need to see, I would like to know what those are so that we can make adjustments?
It sounds from the audience that the unit reduction is the most appropriate. Thing would make me more open to it if it went from 113 to 92 or some number even lower than that. That's the biggest issue. The citizens seem to have is the ultimate size of the lots.
Agreed.
I mean, that's... I don't want to speak for Mr. Lerman, but that may be why he said no, and I said yes. But if that could be a stipulation, it's back to the Planning Commission. I wouldn't prolong this course, but those are the biggest issues these citizens are raising against the size. It's gonna bring in less people and bring in less revenue, but that's my biggest issue. I don't want to... I don't know what that does in the next step. Contextually, I don't know if that... How that needs to go back into planning, back here, and it's... The less units would be my biggest personal issue, I guess. Instead, it's an issue that I'm hearing.
Henry.
I want to compliment you on putting this recap together. It's very good. You captured about everything that I had to talk about. But those items that I asked about that are itemized in this, those would be my stipulations. Not necessarily all of Councilmen.
That you would like to maybe see those reflected in the legislation somehow?
And I would like to remind the Chair, he's absent tonight, so Andrew, if you could get ahold of Mr. Perkey to see if he has anything that he would like to see or how he would like to proceed with this. I was just gonna push it forward to the next meeting, because that's, you know, what we've always done. But we feel like we ought to hold up until we hear from the Judiciary Chair. I'm okay with that as well.
I can communicate with him, and I think next... Is there Judiciary before?
I don't think so. I think it's... Because the Judiciary would have been today, so this is the second.
Well, April 6th.
Yeah, so it would be the first meeting in April. So, yes, there would not be Judiciary, but, you know.
All right.
If you'd want to communicate with the Chair, then, you know, we could... If we got a special or something like that.
Yep, I just want to make sure that everyone feels good about what's in front of them.
Sure. And if you think of something, please contact your clerk, and then we can, you know, figure it out from there, so... Okay, is it okay to move on? Everybody okay? Okay. Item C is a second reading on reduction waiver of an active open space in Timberland. We heard about this last council meeting. Has there been any questions or anything of that nature? Okay, I'll move for the second reading of Resolution 2315, please.
Second.
Most of them case I've asked for a second reading of the Resolution 2315. May I have a roll call?
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Eblin?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Lerman?
Yes.
If you're curious, may we have a second reading, please?
A resolution authorizing a reduction or waiver of active open space in Timberland Phase 6.
Okay, we'll ask for our third reading at the next meeting. And that is all we have, Mr. President. Thank you very much for the indulgence of the audience during this very hefty and waiting discussion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Public Works Enterprise Committee.
You'll report, Mr. President?
We have the auditorium report. What is your pleasure?
We accept this president's second.
I am getting it. You're just excited. Now, enter into the area of the meeting that's open to the public. We ask the clerk to call the names of the folks that have signed up to the chapter. And of course, I'll remind you as always to take that as a purpose.
Anyone else? Oh, does anyone else want to sign up to speak? First up is David Henry. Okay, you just... Oh, wait.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, hold on.
Oh?
You get to speak until you're ready. And just let me know when you're ready.
Okay. To calm this out should be pretty good. Okay, I'm David Henry. I'm candidate for municipal court judge. Unlike my opponents, I'm not married to a retired judge, and I'm not the son of a sitting judge. In fact, nowhere do I have to rely on a family name as my sole qualification for being a judge. I have extensive experience and vision. I have been a felony prosecutor for years for Clinton County. I've been a senior assistant attorney general for the state of Ohio. I have practiced before every level of court in this state and every level of federal court with the exception of the United States Supreme Court. For the past three years as municipal prosecutor, I have been in that courtroom every day that it was open, representing Wilmington, Sabina, Blanchester, the Ohio State Patrol, and the Clinton County Sheriff's Office. I am the Assistant Law Director for Wilmington, and I am the Law Director for Sabina. I have been involved in many different types of cases, from failure to tag a dog to requesting the Federal Court of Appeals to allow the state of Ohio to carry out its ultimate penalty, death. I have been endorsed by the Clinton County Sheriff. I have the support of all levels of law enforcement inside of the county. I also have the support of many defense attorneys. I believe that the United States Constitution means the same thing today as it did in 1791. In my court, I will follow that Constitution and the laws as they come from Columbus. It will not be my job to determine what the law should be. I have lived the aspiration equal justice under law. And that means I don't care who you are, what you look like. When you enter into the court, you are treated the same as everyone else. Nothing better, nothing worse. I raised my family in Clinton County, and I can tell you that over this time Clinton County has changed tremendously. I hear about Main Street at night every day, and most of the time it includes the title "The Zombie Apocalypse." Today, people don't feel as safe as they did three to five years ago. While I can't say exactly how I would rule on any particular case, I can absolutely tell you without question, I will follow the law as it pertains to the purpose and principles of misdemeanor sentencing. That is to protect the public from the offender and others, and to punish the offender. The question for you voters is, who will have the backbone to do what a judge must and should do? I know I do. I ask for your vote.
I have next on the list David Ruff. Are you wanting to speak again, or was it just the first time?
I mean, I can ask next time. I guess my questions are, there is a shag bar hickory that's on the property line that's adjacent to the neighbors behind me when this trench goes in, that they're planning on putting in. That's gonna cut all the roots. And I believe the tree is mostly on his property. What happens with that? That was one of them.
That's a detail we don't know the answer to yet. I don't know.
Okay. And I can't remember the other one right now, so.
Okay, thank you.
I'm getting old, too.
We all are.
Jamie Knowles, did you want to speak again?
I'll make it brief, I promise. The first thing I want to talk about was, from what I'm being led to believe, there's a collapsed sewer line back in Denver that's causing issues. I think you were out around. I've noticed a lot of plumbing trucks this winter in the neighborhood. I got asked today, what do I do with these bills since the sewer line collapsed? And I've had plumbers out to my house. Does the city offer any help with that? I don't know the answer.
Contact for the city.
I'm sorry?
With contact for the city.
Okay, and that's fine. I just...
Don't mention it.
They asked, so. I'm not really affected, but you know, you know where it is. The only other thing is, I hope that there's no health and safety issues, because I think it's probably been longer than any of us wanted to even believe. Because I've noticed that my yard over the last year, half is flooded, air for a time frame. And I just figured it's because of the air change. Go pay their deckies and put concrete in.
Actually, that's more likely. This is back to the sanitarium. That stormwater shouldn't have been in this.
No, right, but it's going into the ground. It's got nowhere to go.
It shouldn't get into the sanitarium, other than where the break is.
My point is, though, the sewage is going in... It's just going into the ground, which means there's no room for the groundwater to go. It's no different than the groundwater at that point.
No, groundwater should not get in our sewer line.
I'm sorry?
Groundwater should not get in our sewer line. Our sewer lines are sealed. So nothing gets out, nothing gets in.
But it collapsed, right?
Yes, that's the only place where you have infiltration.
Right, okay.
But that's at the other end of the block.
Right, yeah, because it stops right out my property, thank goodness. But anyway, long and short of it, I just wanted to briefly get on what was talked about with the homeless issue. We were told nonviolent crimes are down, but that's where we're gonna start to enforce them. Nonviolent crimes down due to people staying out of the areas and they're not reporting, does that mean? Seventy to $75 a day for us to put people in jail? What's it cost one homeowner, those 10 people that break into a home? I can tell you. I can show you pictures. You'd be absolutely wanting to vomit. It's cost me over $50,000 because we don't want to put people in jail and prosecute? That's a big expense on a family home. I'm not the only one. I'm not. So when we talk about this subdivision, why don't we talk about more affordable housing, not unaffordable housing? That is it. Thank you very much.
Your turn.
Thanks, Jamie.
Next up is Josh Schlauber.
Thank you.
It's welcome.
Hello, Council. I'm Josh Schlauber. I've lived here in Wilmington for eight years. My wife and I have been married for 17. She's here with me tonight. We have four children, ages 14, 12, 11, and 6. I am currently serving on the City of Wilmington Planning Commission and running for first ward of the City Council. So I just wanted to introduce myself to you tonight, and in the past few weeks in first ward, I've had some good conversations with residents. And I just wanted to share a little bit of what I've experienced concerning the PUD. Two main concerns that almost everybody talks about is the sewer line. We want to make sure our sewer works. We don't want to have problems down the road. And I said, I'll bring that up. Here, we'll talk about that. Someone mentioned concerns about a four-inch high-pressure line emptying into the ash line. I don't know, but it's something to look into. Another concern, and Mr. Albright, you addressed it, but everyone talks about the lot size. Forty-one feet is pretty small. And we've heard the data that people want low maintenance. We don't want a lot of yard to take care of. However, that might be the truth in other communities, but what I'm hearing from our residents here in Wilmington, and if I am honest with myself, if I had the choice whether a 40-foot lot, 50-foot lot, or 60-foot lot, I would probably pay a little more money for a little more space. The slot size that's proposed leaves 10 feet between homes. Last week, I was over on Darbyshire Drive measuring the job for siding. And I was in between the houses, and I thought I should just see what the space is here. And it is actually 10 feet on most of the homes in there. But those are wider lots, and I didn't feel like it was cookie cutter. That's a nice neighborhood on Darbyshire, over by the college. It's clean, it's quiet. And I think this could work in this proposal. But I just wanted to make a suggestion. Since this is a PUD, we kind of have the freedom to create a zone in and of itself, if I understand it correctly. So we don't have to make them all 50-foot lots or 60-foot lots. If the developer wants a 40-foot lot, I feel like there can be two 40-foot lots side by side, but just no more than two beside each other. And then you can have a 50- or 60-foot lot to create space with a larger setback to allow for access to the backyard and emergency concerns. So I just wanted to bring that up. I guess that's it? Thank you. Appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Is this Tony Thomas? Is that... You're... Okay, I'm sorry. It's just scratching. No, it's okay.
My name is Tony, as you all know. Formerly known as a sergeant, a United States Marine Corps, ever since I turned to the Army. I served every one of you. And I became educated. I gained three degrees. And when I came home, I was... I got a person at home. And due to the criminal acts of Judge Rudd, I just showed this gentleman, our next judge, who I'm gonna ensure that happens, a criminal document that aided in that. But the apple doesn't fall far from the tree, does it? I turned it into the chief here, where our law director, another Rudd, has thrown hammers at his children, somehow escaped that. But then it goes even further. He has pandered porn of he and his wife.
Let's stop this.
That's not a dirty word. Excuse me, my constitutional rights.
We are...
Can you please stop this? It's not theirs. It's a constitutional right for me to speak. Porn is not a dirty word, sir.
No, sir.
Thank you. But anyway.
We don't need to be attacked.
It's a fact. It's not an attack, it's a fact. Brett Rudd, pandered porn of he and his wife to me.
This is not the right thing.
And I turned it into the chief of police. And this is gonna be the person who is next running for our municipal court judge. How is that even happening, people? How is that even allowed to happen? Because of his daddy's name? Because he continues to get away with everything he's been pandered to and catered to his entire life? I see he left because he knew I was coming to speak. I've got proof of every single document, if you want to see it. You want to see his taxes? I'll show them to you. Without a doubt, my... You want to see the illegal document that I just showed our next judge here? Which he is now bound by. That made me homeless, a disabled, 100% service-connected disabled veteran. Our judge, our now judge, Rudd, aided in making me homeless because he was catering to a criminal bank. Money. It's all about money. That's why I have a problem. That's why I come here every single time, and I hate corruption, and I hate corrupt people. I hate them. And it's caused a poison inside of me. Because if they'll do that to somebody who served them and signed a check, to die for, almost die for them, and these people took my home, put me and my children on the streets. They don't care about you, people. If you think they do, you've lost your minds. They don't give two shits about you.
All right, that's enough.
Simplify, brother. Simplify.
I agree with that.
Simplify.
Thank you, Tony.
Uh, yes, next we've got Jane Jones.
I like a dress that died without sugar or cemetery. You know, God does put you in the right place at the right time. On February the 8th. I never go to breakfast at McDonald's, but that morning I did. This couple right here sat next to me. This woman here is staying at the Pope House, and her teddy bear boyfriend, which the police, what's called, PD calls, the teddy bear couple. They're well-known, okay? So I sit and listen to their conversations. Yeah, I'm eavesdropping, and I'm eavesdropping hard. I want to let you know that these two, I listen to conversation, they are recording seances over our loved ones in the cemetery, okay? Bothered me. My husband's parents are buried there, and that greatly bothers me. I didn't believe it, but I listened to where they start their little campfire. It's right behind Clintmore Hospital, right from the bridge. You go across the bridge, heading towards Nelson, turn left into a field, there's a little cluster of brush there. They talk about a very small fire. I listen to this, and I'll tell you what else I learned. The farm. You ever heard of the farm? I'm sure a lot of you guys haven't. PD knows where the farm is. It's Saturday Street out of Clarksville. Drug house, okay? They're bringing drugs in from the farm, so they can have their little seances. That's their, I learned that the seances happen at a full moon. This is crazy, okay? Because I, I can't make this, this up. So, four days ago, what was that, what I said? I'm not, I'm not thinking. I start getting, and you all know that I'm part of Wilmington local crime concern. I know you guys all know, but I have people that are community members start sending me pictures of veterans and drug addicts, people tweaking out, coming out of the woods. And here's our famous little teddy bear couple walking together, right here. She's huffing on a pipe. Crack pipe, meth pipe. I'm not sure I don't do drugs. Hanging out, and we got traffic coming in to our cemetery after dark, okay? People across the street on Truesdale are calling me, and I tell them, no, 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 I am not law enforcement. We have police called PD every time you see a car. Well, I just want to let you know, we either need to lock the gates or have heavy patrol because we are having seances and drug dealing going on in our Sugar, Sugar Grove Cemetery, which is, should be reserved for our loved ones in place of peace and respect. That's all I want to say.
May I just add something just for thirty seconds? I probably not even add. And I haven't looked, I didn't look last time I entered, I meant to, I forgot. There used to be a sign that said, "The cemetery opened at dawn, closed at dusk." Those gates, all the gates used to close at dusk and open at dawn. It's city property. My idea, and I mentioned it, Bill, and I think I might have even mentioned it to Johnson, you have the city employee that goes in there right at dawn, because I've seen him all the time, I'm over on Truesdale checking that house every morning at dawn. They pull back to the, the maintenance building back there. Have them open the gates. Have PD cruise through at dusk to make sure they're not locking anybody in at show. I mean, that, I, I don't know if that can be done, but it's just an idea.
Jamie, I would tell you, that'd be great for vehicle traffic, keep for vehicle traffic and get it, but, once again, you know, we've heard the topic, the behavior, it's homeless, they can get off access from the bike trail. And that's where we come in and patrol that, do extra patrols on that side.
Right.
But we just wouldn't, we would get in the front of the doors if the gates are locked in front.
Right, well, I mean, we built that ramp off of the bike path. I'm sure that's something that people were, I know people were coming off there, where they, years ago, somebody knocked a hole in the fence, and then people were coming off the bike path going into the, and I was getting, just as, you know, as everybody else, going into the cemetery off the bike path from the hole in the fence, because I used to walk from Richardson over to Mom and Dad there on Truesdale. But we actually built a ramp that you can get a car down now.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
So, I mean, I don't know if that can be closed or not, but that's just, just in a bit.
I have, I have one small question, and actually, it should be directed to you. We have that new section of biking app that's running from Nelson to Ogden Run. Are we putting, sending patrols down that route?
Our section, we will. We do, we do.
We will, or we are?
We do, but what I'm looking at is, once we get some, some more infrastructure out there, putting cameras out there as well.
Okay, so that's running behind my property, and we've got traffic out there. That'll be your next complaint from you.
Thank you. Do we have any other participants tonight?
Didn't, didn't, so they had drones when we put the side visual watch app originally? They didn't have drones?
Is there anyone else scheduled to speak, Andrew? Anyone else in the council? As a promotion, we are in here to thank you all for having such a...